First up, quick discussion of the appointments. It's around.
Yeah.
I guess we're just picking up where we left off at. And that is where?
Oh, I would say it's on the first page.
Your core is way down.
Words.
Dark ink. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the first one is, effort will be made to appoint council members. The other one is, each member shall be appointed to know less than one.
Well, I guess I'll start with that. I like the top one. If there is a council member that does not want to be on a committee, they should have the option. So, I mean, that's a pretty cut and dry one as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree too.
You want me to keep going? The next one, being I'm the appointee to the Fire Authority Board. I'm the only one that's an elected official that's currently on the Fire Board. Fruehlund has chose not to, Whitehall Township has chosen not to. The board functions appropriately. It operates well. I mean, so as far as needing an appointee from council on there, so long as they come back and bring the information back to you guys and everything else, I don't see where that needs to be a definite council member or not unless it's in the, I don't think it's in the Articles of Corporation for the Fire Board, so.
I would agree with that, and I think also Norm is.
They can't hear us.
You can't, oh, they, I didn't pay attention. I said, "Stand up," sorry.
You can't hear me?
No.
Oh, you want me to use that other voice?
Yes.
All right, I'll use that other voice. I'll break it. No, that's not okay. I think it's that.
Remain a warning.
Yeah, nobody pays attention to them. Funny. So, yeah, I don't see a reason why that needs to be done. And Norm was a previous council member. He is the other Whitehall representative. He does very well. He's our.
Library Board.
Treasurer as well, I think, on whatever. He sits, he's a pointee for something, I don't remember. I think it's treasurer, whatever position is. CFO, maybe? Yeah, so, things work well, so, like I said, I don't see a reason. But, again, that's just me.
I didn't see any reason, but I figured you wouldn't know if there was a reason.
And I would let you know.
You know, that.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of neither or, so.
I like the condition, though, Jeff, about coming back and reporting. That's, I think that's important.
Yeah, I've had Pete directed, he's on Scott, though, right? He hasn't been? All right, I'll get on again.
I think the solid waste authority is all electeds, if I'm correct. Yeah, so, if it, if they, I'd like to keep it consistent. If it's all elected, I'd like to keep it consistent. And so, it might, I don't know if that's part of their own documents or not, but I just, that would be my preference. And it's not because I'm on it, but I have experienced it, and I know that they're all representing the two cities and the four townships, as elected representatives.
We don't happen to know if it is a requirement of theirs.
I don't believe it is a requirement of that, being an elected official on either fire or solid waste.
I thought it was for solid waste, but regardless, everybody is Scott, so I'd like to reflect what the rest of the body is doing.
Could we do it the same way, as we're talking about, you know, an effort will be made for those positions to be council members, but if we don't have a qualified person or an interested one, could that be, could we manage it the same way?
Well, you could, if you went that direction, you would just get rid of that whole sentence.
Right.
Or if you agree with Councilmember Cabala, you could just get rid of the Fire Authority and say that solid waste authority shall be the current member of council.
It says it must be a council member, but that's in bold, so does that mean that that's what's proposed? On White Lake Solid Waste Authority, the back page, page four.
Um.
The bold word.
That would be if, if it's adopted, if this is adopted.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's.
So, it's not that way now, that's why it's in bold, okay.
Yeah, at least we've consistently had elected solid waste authority. And it might be, it might be part of, either part of their statutory authority, or it could be just the way they decided to operate.
How can we just remove the Fire Authority part of it then, and say the solid waste authority needs to be a council member?
That's the way it is.
I mean, unless it changes. I mean, it used to be the Fire Authority Board was made up of, completely of, of members of elected officials, too, and that just kind of, over the last three or four years, it's kind of gravitated the other direction, and everybody that's on there is, I mean, definitely, there's a learning curve with that, and they're, the people that are got on there are learning, but from Fruehlund and Whitehall Township, but, yeah.
Well, let's just leave it until it changes, I guess.
They're appointed by the council, so if the council wants to appoint somebody from the city council, then they can do that whenever there's an opening. There isn't really a term limit or anything on that.
No, no.
So, when an opening comes and they're appointed by the council, so if somebody on the council wanted to be on there, you should put in his thing and say, "I want to be considered," and then the council could decide whether or not that was who they wanted.
So, are we just getting rid of Fire Authority or the whole sentence?
Fire Authority.
We can just do the Fire Authority for now as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
We can always revisit if we have any.
Yep. Down in the next paragraph, it's about soliciting with an ad in a local newspaper during the month of, left at blank. You are looking to make appointments, if you go up to the second paragraph, the second meeting in January, so I don't know if you want to advertise in December, November. How much advance notice do you want out there? I mean, as far as the city's website and Facebook, there'll probably be something about, probably more on the website, something permanent, soliciting candidates. The website or the Facebook, probably, you know, as new posts come up and comments come up, that gets pushed down. But if you want an ad in the White Lake Beacon or other local newspaper, November work?
I think November.
I think November is better than December.
Yeah.
Because December, holidays and everything, some people might not be paying attention to the papers much, so.
People are paying attention to politics in November, usually.
That they are.
If they put the ad in and they'll see that, and then they know they have to have it in by, they have to have it in by what? By January 1?
Probably, yeah. So, we've got plenty of time to look at a list of candidates.
Could we also put it in the last, the October newsletter? Isn't there an October newsletter?
Yeah.
That would go out? Put it in there as well?
That's why we say the social media platform, so you're right, the newsletter, Facebook, and.
Got it.
It's the website. On to page two. And then I guess, council members, you just mentioned a deadline, but we're requiring all candidates to complete an approved application with a deadline during the month of blank staff last appointees whose terms are due to expire if they want to continue to serve. So, that could also be the November. And a January 1 deadline. Below that is the, "Or, all candidates and current members seeking reappointment shall complete a city-approved application form." So, I guess you have to decide which one of those paragraphs you want before we fill in the blank or two.
I think the first one's sufficient, as far as my needs. Be already there, it's just as easy to ask if you want to continue, and if you look at application, you know that this person wants to continue, and if you've got new people, that decision will have to be made based on that.
I really can't hear you guys. We can hear Councilwoman Hillibrand when she speaks into her microphone, and nobody else is speaking into their microphone, but can't. I'm sorry.
There's bands out there.
It's these old ears, I think, is the problem, but.
Can you hear me now?
Are they working? Can you hear that?
Yes, they are working.
Okay.
All right, so what I said is, I'm happy with, I'm happy with the first one, which is, "All candidates shall complete." What's the middle? And if you are already appointed, and your term is due to expire, you can just let them, or they call you and let you know, hey, your term's up, do you want to continue? Like we do now.
I would rather have everybody fill out an application.
Can we call it an information sheet and not an application?
Right, that's fine.
Okay, is that okay?
But what's going to be different from one time to another? Are they going to add just more years of qualification, or?
I don't even know what's on it, so.
I mean, yes, but I think.
Are you interested?
As long as.
Yes or no?
As long as they're not assuming that it's guaranteed that they will be on again.
Well, I don't know if, how, if they assume or not, but I just think if they've got one application, and that should suffice. I mean, if we keep it on file, or?
I would think once, and then, yeah. I mean, if your information significantly changes.
Yeah, unless you, unless you want to update it, yeah.
Instead of an information sheet, can we call it a letter of interest?
I like that.
That's interesting.
So, we're going with the top one, and the letter of interest has to be in by January 1. And then for the current board members, we'll, I guess we probably want to ask them in November?
Makes sense.
Okay, just trying to keep the Januaries and the Novembers matching up.
I guess the only big thing I have, problem I had with that, with the current members not having to fill anything out is, if they all want reappointed, nobody new can get on a board.
Not necessarily. Council can still, if you have two members on a board that want to be reappointed, and you've got five other applicants, you can still choose any of the seven. As Mr. Zimmer pointed out, it's not automatic that you get reappointed.
It is right now.
No, it's not. They all, they all come to the city council for approval. None of them are automatic without your approval.
Well, more or less, but.
It seems easier to me that if you're going to look at, easier to compare, I guess, if you've got one of the person that's currently there and one of somebody else who's not on, would like to get on. I can go either way, I guess.
I see that, I mean, they're not going to throw the letters of interest away, so, I mean, you know, they'd have a file for whatever committee that is there, and the person that's on it, letter of interest would probably be left in that file along with the new ones they put in there. If that person decides to get off mid-year, you've got other people you can draw from, from the file, so.
And I would think in the future, if we have a board that's got two members that are incumbents, if you will, and three that are seeking new, we would just list all five of them. You'll have letters of interest from three of them, and a note that these two are incumbents and have served two years, 10 years, whatever that might be, just so you have a little background on them.
I don't really have, it doesn't matter which, which way it is, I guess. I mean, we've already done a 12-year term limit, so I don't know what we decided as far as people that are already on goes. When they come up the next time, if they're already past 12 years on board, does that mean they're done? Or are they grandfathered because they're already there, if they have interest? I just, you know, something needs to be clarified one way or the other, or, like I said, if everybody on a particular board that's already on it wants to be reassigned to it, there's no place for a new person to be able to get onto that board.
Other than term limits.
Yeah. When we did the 12-year term limit, we didn't specify whether somebody that might already be on a board, that's already been on it for 15 years, I mean, you're not going to take them off of it right now, but when that term ends, that person should be done for at least 12 months, by the way we wrote that. But I don't, we didn't specify anything like that, so.
Well, you're right, maybe, because up in paragraph three, members are ineligible for reappointment to the same board authority, et cetera, having served 12 or more consecutive years. So, yeah, I guess we haven't determined if that starts when this is adopted for 12 years, or if when they come up for reappointment, I think is what you're asking. Let's say they come up, most of them come up in odd years, so in 2025, actually, I think we've got them in every year. So, in this fall, assuming this gets adopted before fall, then that would be the question. If we look at appointees who are up for or desire reappointment and have already served 12 years, are we starting, and I don't know if we've got some magic verbiage for that, but I know what you're saying, I just don't know how to put it down, if that's what council wants to do. Are you going to start the 12 years this fall, or has it already started retroactively?
I think we should go retroactive.
That's what this says. I think, I think it's, reading this, that's how we apply right now.
Yep.
Change it.
All right, so this fall, if somebody's served 12 or more consecutive years, then they.
Cannot.
Be ineligible for reappointment. Okay.
Well, they could go from, say, solid waste to planning commission.
Correct.
Without any.
Yep.
Wait time.
Correct.
Right, or something like that, yeah.
The next choice, and mayor stock me if we get to the limit, is residency is preferred or you shall be a resident six months prior to appointment?
Sorry, can we just, just a point clarification?
Yes.
On the, talking about the deadline of the letter of interest?
Yes.
Did you say January?
Yes.
And then we are discussing appointments at the second meeting in January, does that give enough time to put everything together?
Yeah, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that difficult. I mean, we'll be putting things together as we go along, so, yeah, that would give us three weeks. And I think that some of the boards do not require residency. I know Planning Commission allows a number of resident, or non-residents, but it does ask for, you know, business people, builders, contractors, kind of a diverse background. And I believe with the Construction Board of Appeals, only one of the three members is a resident. There again, you want contractors and builders to sit on that board. So, it just gets a little more difficult as far as the field of candidates, if you restrict to residency, but, you know, I get it, you prefer to have residents, the people that live here and pay taxes and shop here, being on the boards.
Which essentially is the first one. Says preferred.
Yeah, yep. I think if, all things being equal, and you've got a resident and a non-resident, you would go with the resident.
Yep.
I agree, as long as they were both qualified.
So, Van Bergen and Vidal are going to be on that committee, then basically.
Well, not Dave, he stepped down from Planning Commission.
That's right.
And I don't even know if Brad is on that one.
Brad's not.
I don't know if they've ever met since I've been here, Construction Board of Appeals, maybe once. So, yeah, the membership slips me, but I think two of them are non-residents. The next is training. First one is, you shall get training if there's some sort of training available, I mean, there's kind of that caveat, or training is not mandatory but highly encouraged. I know that we get a lot of newbies, and I think Jeff, you already talked about the learning curve. I don't think we're extremely complicated as far as any of our boards. I mean, training would definitely be nice, but I know a lot of people volunteer just to get to the meetings, a little long, go away for a weekend of training, or a week worth of training, but it's your call.
I would say encouraged. I mean, I certainly took advantage of it when I was on council before, but I know everybody's schedules are busy, and I know that for me, even with my part-time employment, it's busy.
I agree with Daniel on that.
And I think planning and council are probably the most active as far as training. There's really not training for Brownfield. There is, we do belong to a number of associations where typically it's just out, like for planning, I'm a member of the American Planning Association. We used to have all nine planning commissioners, so we were paying 10 dues, getting the same material, so now I'm just the member, so if there's stuff that comes along as far as training or flyers, then, you know, I'll pass that out. So, we'll go with the.
Not mandatory but highly recommended, or highly encouraged.
Yeah. If it's available, yeah.
Yep.
All righty. Now, those are pretty easy. Relatively. The next one is, appointees shall be removed or subject to removal by council if their attendance falls below a certain percent, or a vacancy shall be deemed to exist in any appointed office if an appointee is absent from regular meetings unless excused by the Authority Board, Commissioner, or Committee. So, the second one is more of a number of meetings missed, and it's up to that board to basically say you're removed, kind of what the city council's got right now. You can excuse a council member, well, we had a council member, a mayor, who would, well, two of them, who would winter in Florida, and the council basically excused them for, you know, six to eight meetings in a row. So, that's your prerogative. And I guess that, you know, trying to stay a little bit consistent, maybe that might be the better one, let the boards police themselves, because they would be pretty good judges to whether or not the absence does not, is not detrimental to the actual service they provide that board when they are there.
That seems like a little level of micromanaging for us to say that.
But are they self-policing, Scott? Have they been doing that?
Or do they need some assistance from us?
No, what has happened in the past is when we do get to appointments and we sit down with the mayor, we will, a lot of times, say, this person's only made 30% of the meetings. Not that that's an automatic disqualifier, but that's a consideration. A lot of times, it's been, well, they've missed 30%, but nobody else has submitted an application, so maybe we'll go with somebody who's missed a lot versus nobody. So, they haven't policed themselves, but it's been, staff has kept an eye on that. And we have talked to some members, like, where you been the last three months?
Could we have, like, on some boards, probably not on all of them, but have an alternate, like, say, on a certain board, and then have somebody in the.
I don't like that. We had that with the zoning board of appeals. We had, I think, three alternate members, and that just got real confusing. Basically, I send out a notice, like I do with any special meeting, is, can you make the meeting? And if three can't, then I pull on those three, but if the meeting, if it gets adjourned or the other ones come back, and it just got real awkward. I don't think we, it's rare that we haven't had a quorum for any meetings. I think maybe LDFA once, and there wasn't anything on their agenda, but as far as planning and council and ZBA, we've always had a quorum. Not always 100% attendance, but to have a quorum and make a decision. So, it just gets awkward.
Just a thought.
Good idea, it's been tried before.
Okay, doesn't work, doesn't work?
I think the second one is, gives us, the committees, I mean, they know, we don't, if there's an issue on planning or one of them, and we need to excuse somebody, you know, that is easy to do.
Yeah.
So, and here, it's automatic. If you miss three and your board doesn't excuse you, you're off.
Unless you're excused.
Correct. Yep.
Which puts the onus on the person to do it.
So, the second one with three consecutive? I haven't seen, I haven't heard or seen any guesses or no's on that one.
It sounds good to me.
Okay.
Nah.
I thought I'd not adjusted.
Okay, maybe I didn't get down to that end. All right.
All right, at this point, I'd like to move on to our next subject.
So, we're done with this for now?
I think we might be done.
We got. You're actually done with all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There may be some.
One more time?
Yeah.
Do we get a final to vote on, maybe at the next meeting? If that's possible?
As you need, so.
So, Scott, on that page four, the White Lake Fire Board, I think that must be all.
Yep.
All right. Next is the commercial rehab, habilitation.
Yeah, maybe this kind of came up, you know, council indicated a desire to move forward with commercial rehab, and what we could do is line it up right with the existing downtown commercial rehab, so basically all of Colby Street would qualify. But going through the act, because now you get into the details if you're moving forward, it states that no exemptions can be granted after December 31 of 2025. Puts a real short window on things, so I guess, you know, it's not really a big deal staff-wise to go through it, but is it really going to reap any benefits if we've only got 18 months to provide, you know, any potential tax breaks for commercial development out there? I'm not aware of any pending, I mean, if we had something, you know, kind of on the hot burner, then I'd say, yes, let's get it through so that this project can go forward, but I'm not sure if it's worth it at this point.
So, what is involved in getting us started?
City council would have to have a public hearing to establish the district, they have to notify everybody in the district, and then after the public hearing, you would adopt the district, and then it would be basically the state law that would take over kind of from there as far as people making applications. So, once the district is established, somebody can come to the city council and say, hey, I'm doing this commercial development, I would like my taxes frozen, is basically what it's done, so that the improvements are tax-free for up to 10 years. And then you would have to approve that, then it goes to the state, and the state would have to approve it as well. So, there's kind of three big steps.
I'd like to see, I don't know, maybe that'd be an incentive for some current landowners to make some improvements?
It could be.
Is there anything else that can be done with this?
Not really.
I mean, it was kind of, it's kind of a one.
Well, we talked about a commercial corridor, which is another tax increment financing.
Yeah.
But a lot of that is restricted to public facilities and improvements, so this is really the best thing out there at the current time, and I haven't heard anything that they're going to renew it or come up with something different.
Well, if they do, I guess we can bring it back.
I'd like to explore it. I'd like to at least maybe survey folks in the corridor to see if they're interested. Maybe, maybe some folk, maybe some are waiting.
Maybe do that first?
Yeah, exactly.
Before we proceed?
Well, I'd like to see if somebody's been waiting and now this is a chance.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any interest, yeah, I agree with you, if there's any interest, we might move forward, but if there's none, it's.
It wouldn't include a single-family residence, would it?
No.
A home, right?
There are certain meeting orders. There are certain meeting orders, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on a high, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Alright, first up is approval of the agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the agenda. I'll second.
Been moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Here you are.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those saying no? Agenda's approved. Next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I have two questions, comments, whatever. Uh, one on, uh, accounts payable, first thing on there, aquatic doctors. Didn't we install bubblers that were supposed to take care of the algae problems, so we weren't gonna have to do the algae treatment?
Nope, it's a combination of the bubblers and the algae treatment to try and minimize.
We've got it in the corner, now it's gonna be working better. Depending which way the wind blows, I can't...
And they tend to get clogged.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the other one I have is on accounts payable, it's on, uh, Playhouse finances. Um, I'm not really sure I understand it fully, but, uh, this is, this is the financials for just the White Lake Youth Theater.
Um, I believe it's the whole summer season, isn't it?
Here, could be just the, the youth theater.
Yep, this is for the White Lake Youth Theater.
Is that what's called Wind Willows or Wind?
Yeah, that's a number of the, uh, that's the name of those play that they put on. I mean, I, I don't, you know... But we can get the full, um, event breakdown, I think we have that.
Right, I guess all I was looking at was, um, I don't know if this was something that was put in here to, to make it look like the Playhouse is making money or not, but I mean, this is only one thing. The, the White Lake Youth Theater thing is, is only one thing that is going on at the Playhouse. There are other things that go on at the Playhouse too, and...
And we, we can get you that list, and some of them make money and some of them lose money.
Okay, so I guess, I, I just don't understand why, why we were given this and, and not given everything, but...
Well, that was my misunderstanding. That's, that's all I have.
In, in the same subject, in my looking at it, it looks like revenues are higher than the expenses for this. I, I don't really understand it either, it's kind of confusing. So you got revenues of fifteen thousand eight forty-six, and it looks like total bills of like, there's nine hundred and dollars.
Twenty, go to the...
Eighty-five hundred and...
Far right says seventeen eight sixty-one, expenses of ninety-five hundred and income of eighty-three thirty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Unless I'm, unless I'm reading it wrong.
No, if you go to the far right, that is your grand total. Each of those columns are four different events as part of the youth theater.
When do we normally get the, the whole financial picture from the Playhouse? Does that, do we not get that before the CPA gets it? Does the audit, or do we normally get it before that?
You, you get a budget every spring to adopt. And we'll have summer theater, it will have all the revenues and all the expenditures not broken down to this detail. And you will get the audit probably, like, probably September, October.
And just for the public's, how many, how many students roughly, or how many kids we got involved in that youth theater program? Any idea?
I think there's, let's just say a couple hundred, hundred and fifty?
I feel like it depends on the class of the play, but the total, drop it down.
Teenager age?
All the way from like toddler to teen, yeah.
Okay, alright, wonderful.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those saying no? No. Consent agenda is approved. Next, messages from the mayor, city manager, start with the council. Steve?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I have is, um, complaints. No, I had some complaints about Goodrich, about the restrooms there, okay? Not that they're closed at ten, but that those bathrooms are kind of gross and, uh, but the men's restroom, I didn't go into women's, but the men's restroom, the door is split in half, uh, going into the stall. And, uh, I don't, I think we ought to be able to fix that, you know? That's probably the most popular park as far as visitors in, in the city. You know, everybody, a lot of people use funnel field, but that's mostly local people and, and I think that we need to put a little better base on those bathrooms down there, they're, they're not very good. And I don't know, as far as keeping them clean, who's responsible for that? I suppose that's the, the Brian's group.
Yep, Public Works is down there Monday through Friday, at least once a day. And then we've got a weekend crew, it's either Saturday or Sunday, and we also ask the marina staff to go in there and kind of police it.
That's what I was gonna ask, I was hoping that they were being...
We do try and stay on top of it, um, but people do not treat public restrooms the way they treat their own restrooms.
Right.
And that door was busted, um, that's something that's not fixable, we've had to order a replacement.
Oh, we did, okay, so we're out then.
Concrete?
You know, that, that, they, they will advertise vandal proof, there's no such thing. It's, uh, maybe vandal resistant, um, but yeah, I mean, they're, they're public restrooms, um, we do the best we can, but again, all it takes is somebody going in there ten minutes after the crew leaves and cleans it to make it unsightly again.
And I think the Fisherman Dock is all done now, right?
Uh, we have some railing still to put up. Um, and we have talked to a local contractor about doing something with the railing along the, I guess, the step-down boardwalk. That kind of goes from there halfway up into the marina.
Right.
So we're looking at improving that as well. So a couple of small items on the fishing dock.
Okay, and then the grass, they're, they're working on, they're planting new grass there.
Yeah.
Kind of a mess.
Yep.
Kind of a weed bed. Anyway, that's all I have, just things at Goodrich Park tonight, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I'm not real, really sure how to go about starting this, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, talk, uh, whatever, in, over the last six months or six weeks, excuse me, um, about the recent, uh, altercation between our mayor and his neighbor. Um, I don't know how, how to go about talking about it the right way, um, the, I, it's something that should have been brought up by the council probably a couple meetings ago, if not the last meeting for sure. Um, I've had dozens of phone calls, emails, uh, messages, what have you, from a lot of very upset citizens of our city about how our, uh, reputation is being harmed. I don't know if that's the right word or not. Um, there's, I, I, it's something that I think the, we as a council and the city staff should have addressed right away. It hasn't been addressed, so I'm gonna bring it up now. I don't know where it's gonna go. Um, I have a letter in front of me that was written by one of our residents that is unavailable to come to the meeting, and they asked me to please read at the council meeting and file an official meeting record. "The recent altercation between Amy Josephson and Major, Mayor Stephen Salter can only be described as a cover-up by City Hall. Given requests for information about this event by members of the Whitehall City Council were denied for weeks and unable to answer citizens' inquiries is indefensible. However, news of the event has traveled hundreds of miles, disgracing the city reputation and trust in city officials. Now, charges against Mrs. Josephson by Mr. Salter's actions have apparently been dropped as the case is closed. The only case open is between Mrs. Josephson and a Whitehall City Police Officer citing her resisting arrest. Mr. Salter punched Mrs. Josephson in the face with a fist in retaliation for being pushed from behind to remove him from her property." In what, in what can, I don't understand, uh-uh. I'll just read it the way it is, it says, "In what can, at the very least," I guess if you read it for... Uh, "be described as an ungentlemanly act. It is a violation of a basic tenet that all men are taught from childhood that under no circumstances do you hit a female ever, especially a disabled elderly woman. In addition, when these altercations occur, both parties may be subject to charges of assault, no matter the sex, gender of either. Claims of self-defense by Mr. Salter are moot at best, especially in light of his public proclamations of his time as a veteran of the war in Vietnam. Seriously, Mr. Salter, you survived the North Vietnamese Army and the Viacom guerrillas to come home and find it necessary to punch an elderly, obviously mentally disabled woman. It is incumbent upon the members of the Whitehall City Council to demand his forthright resignation from council and be removed by a vote of the council in order to assure the citizenry of Whitehall that such lapses of personal discipline will not be tolerated." That was submitted by Mr. Gerald Rowe. I'll leave it at that, and if it comes up as a discussion item somewhere along the line here, so be it.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have, thank you.
Jeff?
Um, a couple things, one, I need to be excused from the next meeting, is I do not have work coverage and I will not be available to make it.
I'll make a motion to excuse Jeff Holstrom from the next meeting.
Second? Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those saying no? You're excused.
Thank you. Um, to go on what Steve was saying about the fishing platform, I've been down at Goodrich Park. I'm kind of turning into my dad. He was down there all the time, I mean, he had his spot. Um, there are a lot of people utilizing that platform. Not just fishing, I watched, it was kind of cool the way it's built, I watched a mom and her, oh, it's gotta be three years old, wandering around because they put that mesh up, the kid couldn't pitch himself in the lake, she was sitting there and he was wandering all over the place, but kudos, I'm glad it's finally done, it's well-used and I'm happy about that. Um, discussion item about the toilets down at Goodrich Park during the Fourth of July, um, that, if I, if I'm correct, that closes at ten o'clock on a, on a good night anyways, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would have been closed anyways. Um, I also, three, four toilets that we had? Kirkster toilets we had put down or was, at the, in the, in the new parking lot? Okay, so they were available. Um, if we need a few more, I, I would just assume people break those toilets in our property, but, um, and then I think that's it. Yes.
Tom?
I'd like to start out by commending the city for the great work that they did on the storm cleanup. It's, uh, with as much damage as we had done, I think we recovered pretty quickly from it and did a good job. On something not quite as pleasant, I had written something last week that, uh, that I'm gonna read here. And relates to what Scott said. Um, this is what I wrote. "There's been an elephant in the room for about six weeks that city employees and city council have not talked about, but city residents and outsiders have been talking about it. It's even been reported on television, so the cover-up has not been very effective. Of course, I'm referring to the incident in late May on the one hundred block of Livingston involving our mayor. Well, twice last week, I was asked or told that as part of city council, I'm part of the problem, because I've not spoken about it publicly. And that seems to be true, and I felt bad about that. Um, so I made up my mind, I wouldn't be silent any longer. And the mayor needs to address the issue and needs to be held accountable. And then yesterday, I got a letter, which I would like to read also. Um, this is from Dr. Sandra Gibbs. Says, "I'm writing this as I'm unable to attend this council meeting. As a research and consulting psychologist, I have worked with many leaders of the city, state, the US federal government. As a US federal senior executive staff, I have provided leadership coaching for those that held some of the highest positions in government. I have also worked with dozens of corporate leaders. In my years of providing guidance in restructuring of business processes current with, concurrent with changes in leadership positions, I have never experienced any leader at the lowest level ever using physical violence to deal with an unresolved conflict, let alone a rural, small-town municipal mayor punching an elderly, mentally ill citizen in the face and leaving her lying in the grass with the bloody notes. The extreme impact of this event became apparent to me immediately when citizens quickly shared with what had occurred. Misinformation spread when the initial counter, encounter was hidden by officials in city hall and appeared incorrectly in the press. Any case between Stephen Salter and Amy Josephson is closed according to the Muskegon County District Court records with no charges. Charges remain against Mrs. Josephson filed by Officer Kevin Namender. However, we have a mayor being described as unfit for office and shocking behavior as described to me by high-ranking Michigan Department of Human, uh, Human, Health and Human Services official. High-ranking Michigan Department of Health and Human Services official. Uh, city council members, request an immediate removal of Stephen Salter as not only mayor of Whitehall, but as a member of the Whitehall City Council and a member of every committee that he has placed himself on. He has shown himself not to be stable enough for his job, nor as the image we want to portray to the rest of the world. Sandra Gibbs." And those are not my feelings, that's what I was given by a senator.
Is that all?
That's all.
Yep.
So I, um, don't have any letters, but I was also planning to speak on this, um, and so I made some notes because I wanted to keep my thoughts together, so please bear with me as I, as I read. Um, I also agree that this matter should have been addressed long before now. Many of us have been witness to the mayor's aggressive manner and easily provoke temper during council meetings. And then recently, um, involved in an incident where admittedly punched a woman in the face and such that she fell to the ground, is in retaliation for allegedly being punched by her and his back. Um, for me, this display of a complete lack of self-control ending in violence is simply un... unacceptable from a public official. It not only reflects poorly on him as an individual, but it's damaging to our city, our council, and our community. This show of angry aggression sends the very dangerous message that such behavior is permissible. It's not. As representatives of this council and voices for our community, we have to address this issue. Therefore, I want the mayor to take responsibility for his action, and in what I believe to be the best... In the best interest of our community, I request that the mayor resign from his position as mayor and from city council. That's all I have.
Danielle?
Okay. I am going to talk about two things. One, the storm cleanup, I wanna echo just the idea or the efforts that I saw of everybody working together. I think it's amazing that no one was hurt. It was a very quick and violent storm, and I think... I would also ask us to get our siren back. I know I didn't have any warning. Luckily, I wasn't one of the more severely impacted, but I do think that some of the folks who were in some of the severely impacted neighborhoods, I just think they were lucky that they survived. So I think we need to look at a bigger plan that does include the siren. I think we need to look at a number of different options to make sure that we're warning our residents, because I don't think this is the last time we're gonna have severe weather like this. I think, honestly, the siren, I heard it in 1998, and I went down to my basement. So for folks... And I live in a house that is plaster, you know, wet plaster walls, so I heard it, went down in my basement. I think if we... I just think we need to have a plan for emergencies going forward. I think everybody did well, but I think we're lucky that... We're lucky that nobody was hurt. And I think one of the things I wanted to mention about... I often have walked in the parade. I was thinking that the first time I walked in the White Lake Fourth of July parade was Friends of the Library when my kids were little. So... And that's when we had the old library here. Numerous times I've been in it, and this time I was really caught up in things and missed all the different groups I'm involved with. And I just sat with my son and my three grandsons, and I said, "Well, here, you know, let's go early," because people put their chairs out and blankets out the night before and, you know. And, you know, I just think it's important to acknowledge, this is a huge parade, and we were able to get parking. We were able to walk downtown streets and actually sat... I saw benches that were still empty in downtown. We sat down at Dairy Treat, an open table, right around 9:30, 9:40, and I think certainly bought something. But I just think, to me, that's the value of our small town is that, you know, I'm not sure that would happen in another community, that you go there last minute and find a place. As for the issue with the mayor, I don't think I have an informed opinion on this at this point. Which means that I can't probably make a determination. I think that's... This is something that councils should sit down and discuss, if that's a possibility. But I don't feel like I have the ability to put forward an opinion, because ideally, I like to know all of the details before I make a decision about things.
City manager?
In accordance with local ordinances, I think I did notify council that I was doing a lot of emergency purchases, just a few really big ones. And I am required to report those back to you. Obviously, with the storm, I think there's a ton of credit, and thank you, and I know all the council members agree, that it was a phenomenal effort by all of those involved in providing emergency services. Public Works Department, police, fire authority, the county, the state. Red Cross was here first thing in the morning, and, you know, kinda the beauty from where I sat is I just kinda watched everybody do their thing. The Red Cross was immediately assessing all the property owners as far as alternate accommodations, and if they had gotten to a point where there was a number of residents who were going to be displaced, then they would've started looking at establishing a shelter. Consumers, DTE, all the other utilities, and I'm probably forgetting a few. I know Marley Heffer fed the emergency responders on Tuesday. People were dropping off donuts and gatorade and water, and I think between the chief and I, we were supplementing those and throwing ice into them. So it was quite a great effort on the recovery. Where we're at right now, I'm still sticking with the storm, then I'll get to the details on the dollars, is that we brought in White Lake Excavating because they had the ability to immediately respond, and they had the equipment, far beyond what our DPW could provide. Not to mention that every tree company and every landscaper out there didn't approach me about getting a little bit of the action. But again, White Lake Excavating, they're local. You know, we had companies from Portage and Calamazoo, and I think even on the other side of the state. So we kept it local, and we had anticipated talking to Tom Woszewski, and I know I'm butchering that name, I do it every time, and I apologize. We had anticipated that they would take two days to clear mirrors. They were done in one day. They then moved into Country Club and got rid of all the heavy stuff, and they are also looking at, on the bike path, they think they have a piece of equipment that can basically drive right down that bike path and just chew up everything overhanging the bike path. So they've done a great job. We've hauled everything out to DPW. If you wanna see the piles, I mean, they're 20 feet tall or more. Don't drive back there a whole lot because it's gonna be muddy, and we've already had to haul plenty of tow trucks the last couple of weeks. But they will be bringing in a tub grinder, which they'll have a front-end loader, and they'll just drop everything in there and just chew it up in no time. So maybe a little later this fall, we'll be giving out some cheap, and I mean cheap, free wood chips in the future. It'll have a lot of material in it. But with the storm cleanup, White Lake Excavating is charging us $2,500 an hour for the cleanup crew, and the tub grinder will be $25,000 a day. We're well over $100,000 in outside costs. We've also had been keeping track of the city's expenses, and I think there's an item on the agenda a little bit later. We are still hopeful that the county did declare an emergency. That went to the governor. She has the option to likewise declare a state of emergency. If so, that opens up a number of pots that could supply reimbursement to the city. If not, there are still some other opportunities for reimbursement. The federal government is not likely to provide the financial assistance that we would be looking for. So we're tracking everything. Alyssa's keeping... Ann Brooker keeping a, you know, real tight eye on all the expenses. So that's about where we're at. My original estimate to the county emergency manager was that our cleanup efforts would be, and our damages, would be anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million. Luckily, there wasn't a lot of city damage. We just... We got lucky. A lot of people didn't. Our policy has been, and we are enforcing it, that if there's a tree contractor that is on-site removing brush, they need to remove it, take it all off. We're not gonna handle theirs 'cause in all likelihood, they're charging the premium, and they're getting reimbursed by the insurance company. We have told contractors who are putting things at the curb, "No, that's yours. You need to haul it out of there." We will take care of everything else that the residents bring out to the front, and any of the street trees that obviously fell during the storm. So that's kinda the summation on that. And just to add to that, the lift station down on Lake Street got fried during the storm. We think it probably took an electrical hit. For people, I've heard complaining about the eagles being close than anything else. Yes, the sewer backup, water goes for the least path of resistance, and it was the eagles. This had happened a year ago, and we had instructed them to have a check valve installed, as well as put in four drain plugs. Neither of those were done. We even told Shide that we would pay for the check valve. None of that was done. They have now installed a check valve, so we're one step ahead. We've been in contact with their president in regards to filing an insurance claim. Last time it was denied. Lightning strikes are an act of God. And what unfortunately happened is it fried the main motor, and the backup motor started to work, but then the electrical panel had also fried too. So we kinda backed up twice in two or three days. It's a mess. We feel bad about it, but we'll let our insurance company determine what, if any fault, is our responsibility. And the last item, just because it's been a good three weeks, the air-conditioning unit that keeps the central office cool fried. The unfortunate part is that ACs are always connected with your furnaces. Our furnace is old enough that the heating coil is shot, and they can't get replacements. So if I wanna make the women happy in City Hall, it's an $11,200 emergency purchase. It just tops the $10,000 to get the AC fixed. So we're spending some money, and it didn't take long into this fiscal year to mess it all up. So anticipate some budget amendments along the way. We have a number of sources we can draw from. It's not gonna bankrupt the city. We have a lot of funds that we can draw from in order to cover our costs.
Do we have any idea how long it might take to get any word from the governor of whether there's gonna be any assistance available?
We don't. I know that the state was in it again today, taking a look at damage. There's two representatives from the state of Michigan. Of course, one guy gets out and says, "Homeland security." I'm thinking, "Where's this guy coming from?" But that is part of his job. And the two state police representatives have been great. I think it was either Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning, there was a damage assessment team. It was basically the Otto County Equalization Department, 'cause they know houses, they know values. They went through and assessed all the damage. All of that's been submitted to the governor, and we're just gonna sit back and wait. I do know that we've had some state representatives took a tour last week, and we anticipate more will. And of course, we're pressing home that whatever help they can, you know, nudge the governor towards, we would appreciate it. Right now, we're taking the position that this is on us. I don't necessarily wanna say it can be on us, but we can cover our cleanup expenses. It's gonna make a significant impact on our budget, so any help we get from the state, and I'll throw the feds in there too, 'cause we haven't heard no yet, would be huge.
Question?
Yes.
Is somebody going around and noting hazardous conditions that still exist, like branches that are hanging over the road, going to come down the next time the wind blows, or, you know, I... Just things like that?
We are... Yeah, we are noting a number of those. I've got one in front of my house. I'm waiting for the road commission to take care of it. The unfortunate part is insurance companies have said no. They're not... They don't totally embrace a lot of tree removal. If it's on a house or a structure, they take care of it. If it's in your yard, insurance companies have not been covering those costs. And if it's hanging and not on a structure, you know, they're kinda waiting till it falls and takes out a structure before they reimburse.
This is a hand right over the road across the street from my house, but it's a good-sized branch. It's been a tangy, totally vertical, and it looks like it's hanging by a thread, and if it comes down and a car's underneath it, it's gonna get speared.
I'll have Brian take a look at that, 'cause that's gonna be a city tree most likely.
Yeah, it is. It's only about two feet from the road, you know, so three feet.
And at some point, we're gonna have to put... You know, I figure, you know, White Lake Excavating can do what I think they can do or what they're expecting. I figured initially this was gonna be months into the cleanup, but they've done a great job. I mean, they're doing things in a day that we thought would take two to three days. But at some point, we're gonna have to notify our residents that on this date, we're done picking up brush. DPW's already been down Mayor's Avenue twice after bi-sizings grew, and people are still drawing stuff out. So we understand that. We know that there's a lot more important things for a lot of our residents than getting the brush to the curb, but we're gonna kinda play it by ear, and at some point, we're just gonna have to say, "We're done. Get it out there."
A couple of things, if I may?
Yep.
Talking to the staff that have showed up from the electrical companies and all that, they have never seen a city like ours as far as people being nice overly. I mean, there was a kids on Country Club and...
I think just on Country Club.
Just on... It was on Country. They set up a laminate stand free to all the responders. Apparently, it was found out that they weren't accepting or they weren't charging, and apparently the kids became very wealthy that day. It was twenties and flying to get this stuff. These power crews have just been just floored by our community. One thing I wanted to mention, Scott mentioned, is the MCC thing. You probably wanna bring that up, 'cause isn't that... Was that the MCC damage at Meskeen Community College? Wasn't there a...
It's actually the county campus, I think they call it the Marquette Campus.
Yeah, the Old Baker College.
That is... I'm drawing a blank, Brooke. They had the wrong date. It's going to be Monday, the 15th.
Is Monday the 15th?
Yes. And the county is going to have a number of agencies there so that people can go there if they need to talk to, you know, the feds, the state, or any other agencies that could help them out. As well as, I think, starting tomorrow, 211 will be fully operational to respond to questions and provide assistance to any residents.
Monday?
Monday.
Two to seven?
Yep, two to seven.
Also a question, the siren is operational correct, Roger, or no? Is it not?
No. Roger, would you like to respond? 'Cause you had a very good response earlier today.
The... There's three prongs to the decision that was made, and I know that it was...
I understand. This was straight line wind, not a tornado. It wouldn't have been sounded anyways, I mean, probably.
Right. But years ago, we chose to abandon the sirens because they lack effectiveness. They are... There are other methods available, so many with communications, whether they are television, cell phone alerts from the Weather Channel, that type of thing. And then the cost of maintaining the sirens was getting quite expensive because it's such a specialty. And we presented it to council that we would be abandoning that, and that was years ago.
Yep.
And they still exist, but I know at least one is not operational.
The other question I got is, is it central dispatch or one of those that has or through the county has that where you can sign up for emergency notifications? Isn't there something out there for the public that for just this kind of thing? It's all kinda like the... It's kinda like the Amber Alert type system. Thank you. It was there. That is available, if I remember it. I signed up for something. I don't remember who it was, though, but...
I'm not aware of that. The last thing I knew that the county dispatch had was the Smart 911, but that's been abandoned because of costs. And so I'm not sure that there's... If they're involved in NICSIL or one of those type of notification systems, but I'm not aware.
All right. I see Mr. Shear in the crowd somewhere. Might be something to look at down the road for the county as far as notification.
I will ask the question. I don't know that there's any...
If we don't, it probably wouldn't...
Yeah, it's a good idea.
It probably would be worth to see if EOC can look into that stuff or put it out. 'Cause everybody carries one, download a phones around, and, you know, you're gonna answer that, you're gonna hear that more than you're gonna hear the siren.
I...
Well, some people don't carry them.
No. I mean, you know, some people don't. I have older senior friends who I tell them to keep their phone charged up in the event, but then I still can't get a hold of them, and they... Not everybody has a smartphone. My smartphone, I don't sleep with it. I didn't... And I... I didn't, and I also, not, we didn't get any warning.
No, and with a 99.5 mile an hour wind is what I was told, you're not going to get a warning. It came across the lake and you're not going to get a warning. As far as.
It's already gone.
It's already gone. It's gone by the time they were able to type it out and get it to us.
But I do think we need to do all of the above.
Okay. So the other thing, just so you guys are aware, between our county emergency manager, our fire department, our police department, our city, there are plans that we are not hanging out there by any means, not having a plan. There are plans out there. They've been drawn up. They get redrawn. The county emergency manager has to put plans. There's a set amount of time and they got to go through all the plans and redo them again. They are out there. I was part of the team that would respond for EMS back when I was there. I would head down to the EOC, which is down in Meskeen, and I would do the direction down there. There is stuff in place for this.
But did any of that help anybody?
No.
Is it not, is it not normal for the town to have an emergency disaster plan?
We do.
We do?
I don't know what it is.
We have one through the county. The cities don't have the, it's a county, it's a county system that is, each county emergency manager is the one that's responsible for the emergency plan.
But apparently, nobody knows anything about them, right?
I'd like to know.
There should be something, that would be a good thing to put in the Waterville or something. Here's what our emergency plans are.
The document is probably, yeah, six or eight inches thick. It's based on what kind of emergency, chemical, radiological, biological, weather. It's all, it's all.
Damn breeze.
Yeah, it's, as Kim tells you, it's huge. There's no way we can disseminate this information to the public.
I don't think that's what we want. I think we want, I'd like to know.
If this had been a chemical emergency, what would have happened?
I'd like to know.
You would have been notified by the police department or fire department. And we would have come to your door and said, hey, this is what we need to do.
And how, they would do it one door at a time?
If it comes down to it, absolutely. Absolutely.
We are, we have signed up or are signing up, I know I signed the PO today, for text.gov.
It launches next week.
It launches next week. So anybody with a cell phone, we can give you immediate notice, notification of any type of those events. Or, you know, a water main break, stay away from Warner Street and Benston. Any type of message, if the people sign up, can go out en masse almost immediately. But the emergency plans are not necessarily, I don't want it to sound the way it might sound, not necessarily for the public, they're for the emergency responders. They go through those, they update them, they have simulated events. And basically, you know, you use those as a basis in the emergency to know how to respond and who to get a hold of.
I don't think we're, I'm not asking for that. What I'm asking for is how, how do we notify people? Given that we all have such different ways. I mean, I know Weather Channel was mentioned. I haven't had cable TV in decades, you know. I have a, I don't, it's not always on, you know what I mean? So I would like to see notification. Because I do think a siren might have caught that or at the last.
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been, it wasn't a tornado. It was a straight line wind.
We had straight line in 98.
And then the siren wouldn't have gone off then either because it was not a tornado.
It did. I told you it did. And I went down in my basement. So it made a difference to me. So I'd like to see more about what our, what our emergency notification plan is. I don't need to have all the EMS.
Go down and talk to the emergency manager. I'm sure she would enlighten you to whatever you wanted to say.
She'd be happy.
Oh, absolutely. She's, yeah, very eloquent.
I don't want to speak with somebody. I want to see what the notification, how are people notified in the event of an emergency, in particular, a weather emergency.
What we need is not one person going down and asking her, but we need something that informs everybody. I don't know what that is.
It doesn't seem like we have that though, does it?
Right now, nobody knows where to call or what to do.
We do, the double edged sword was that the day before, the day of, the evening of, we also lost communications at City Hall. I enjoyed finally sitting down and listening to a few dozen messages. Hopefully, the people understood why I didn't respond. The most effective notification is boots on the ground. The Tuesday that it happened, police, fire, DPW, myself, were pretty much going, not house to house, but in general, that was the best notification. With the text.gov, that would be another tool.
All the houses on the floor that have an X on the window were searched and dealt with.
But, yeah, I think you're missing, I'll, I think you're missing my point.
I understand what your point is. The problem is, there's certain things that are an impossibility. You can try the best you can try. You can do what you can do, but you can't, boots on the ground, door to door, is the best way to get a hold of everybody.
But you're missing my point. I don't mean after an event. I'm talking about in the event that we have extreme weather, that we have at least some notice of. And we had to have had some notice of that.
No, there was no notice for that. Because, Tanya, I keep abreast of all this stuff. And it followed me to Meskeen because I was going to work. And what had happened afterwards, I mean, I was watching the radar. I watched the radar every day, multiple times. It's just what I do.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make it go farther. But I do think that, I do think you're missing my point. And maybe I'll be able to make that clear in writing.
Okay.
The whole thing is done in 15 minutes.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
It blew through. I was getting ready to go to work at 5:30 in the morning, and it was fine. And then we started hearing the wind coming. It came. 15 minutes later, it was all done. And all them trees came down in 15 minutes. It was just unbelievable. And if you lose power, you can't really let people know. You can't tell them to watch television because they don't have power.
For somebody like me, anything that comes over your phone doesn't do it, wouldn't do me any good because I shut my phone off and I go to bed.
Well, what I'm saying is notification, but recognizing that people have such a variety of ways. I just think, I just think going forward, it wouldn't hurt for us to, I'd like to know.
Your preference would be to have the sirens working again and somebody be able to flip the switch.
I think it would be one piece of a notification plan, yes. Most of the time, we do get some idea that we've got severe weather. I mean, I was glad that I still was, I had charged my cell phone up prior to that. So I was able to use my cell phone. And I got mine mostly from social media. And that's when I saw that White Lake Fire Authority and other folks had said to stay put. I didn't know that up until that point, you know. I didn't see it on TV.
Who also lost their fiber and their phone for four days, five days?
Thursday evening it came back on. So four days, three.
So they didn't have it. They ended up making and getting a hold of a cell company to get a phone cloned at the fire department so they could answer phone calls as they came in. But, yeah, it's, it's difficult to notify everybody.
I just think we were, I think we were lucky. And Scott knows, he gets me here.
Yeah, I do too.
All right. So everybody had their say? Now, public comment.
Val Barnes, 1203 King Street. First, let me say, the last city council meeting that was held in the middle of this worst weather catastrophe, I was really impressed with a couple, maybe three of the council members that showed genuine concern about our friends, neighbors, clients, and families during this devastating time. When I was here, I didn't have power, but I also didn't have any damage. Country Club subdivision would be going through the after effects for months, if not years. So when I got home, my power came back on. And what do you think? The first thing I saw was the television story of the mayor and his neighbor in a brawl. So that does not need to be on news media. It needs to be done in a court of law. Not on social media, not in news media. But somebody had to have called the news media, or it probably wouldn't have been on there. So for the good of the city and the citizens of the city of Whitehall, I'm asking that action be taken to remove Steve Salter from mayor position and any committee related to the city. Please take into consideration. A resignation would be the best.
Hi, I'm Christina. So I'd like to talk about what I talked about earlier. So I don't know who's gaslighting you, telling you that the bathrooms got closed at 10 o'clock. I have video of it because I was quite upset as my daughter needed to use the restroom. It was an emergency. It was well before 10 o'clock. There were signs on both doors that said restroom closed. There was no portageons that we saw within that vicinity. So again, whoever's gaslighting you, telling you that it was at 10 o'clock that it got closed, they're lying to you. Also, I know you guys get a lot of negative and you guys get positive things. I just want to say, this is a great town to live in. Wonderful people live here. As far as the City Hall goes, there's been probably two people that have been excruciatingly rude every single time I talk to them. But I just want to focus on those front girls that work up there. They're phenomenal. They are amazing. They are so sweet. They are so kind. And I know that they probably get some backlash, but man, if they deal with whatever and they pick up the phone and they are cheery as can be, they don't let anything bother them. Even when you come in, they're wonderful. So Whitehall, we have so much to be thankful for. Again, great community. There are a few bad apples. But y'all need to give those city girls a raise. And, I mean, maybe just like a portable air conditioning, like, that would probably be nice.
Hello, I'm Kathy Russell at 303 South Mears. And I'm also one of the managers at Colby's Hokey Pokey. And I wanted to thank the city and TIPA for the improved parking lot. And the comments we're receiving from our customers is fabulous. They're like, finally, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I did have an opportunity to drive on it just this past week, and it's so smooth. So I know that there's been a lot yet to happen back there. We need to have the handicap sign moved back into position where the striping is, as well as the stop sign as you come through the alley to enter that parking area. And I did call DPW. They said they'd try and get to it. And I said, I understand you guys are swamped and I get it. But if you can get to it, that would be awesome. So thank you very much. And I'm so glad that parking lot is paved. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Cooper. My wife and I live at the center of the storm. I awoke at 5:45 Tuesday morning and looked out my living room window and saw over, I can look at, I can see White Lake, and I could see to the horizon storm approaching over Lake Michigan. That was at 5:45. I saw the lightning. I was tired. I went back to bed. I didn't get to sleep. I heard the wind rise. It got louder. I opened the curtain. I could see the neighbors' trees at a 45. I told my wife we were in a tornado. I've lived here all my life, by the way. She got up. We live in a very tiny house. No basement, no shelter of any kind. Personally, I thought I was going to die. So we survived that. It sounded like the freight train that people speak of. It was loud, very loud. And I went back to the living room window, opened the curtains, and I was waiting for the trailer across the street to start coming at my home. That's when I heard on the window, and I thought, this is a stupid place to be standing. So I closed the curtains and I walked the 20 feet that I had possible into my dining room. The wind subsided and I walked outside and saw the devastation. I walked out into my driveway. I could see the power lines were down, so I knew better. So I didn't venture any further. Although some young, I don't know how old he was. Some young man was trying to get on his bicycle. There was no passing our street. So I entworn him that he should go home right away and watch for downed lines. So we waited. There was no siren. There wasn't going to be a siren. There was no time for a siren. And the best response, or the best, my opinion, my wife and I went through a near tornado in Lansing last October. And I heard the siren. I was at my sister's, staying at my sister's home. And I heard the siren from their station. And I knew what it was because when I pulled up to that corner years ago, the doggone thing went off as a test mode and my window happened to be down. It was loud. I was sitting in her garage and I could see the wind or the rain start to go sideways. So I knew I had to close the garage door. So as I got up to close garage doors when I heard the siren, our phones immediately went off with an alert. So we headed to her basement. It was soundproof. Didn't hear a thing. We came out and her yard and neighborhood was destroyed. So here we are again. Thank God, no one was hurt in this incident. I see homes cut in half. When I finally realized, my wife and I realized that we might, it got lighter and we could see the power lines and knew our way around, we started checking on our neighbors.
Can you wrap this up? You've had your time.
I'm sorry?
Can you wrap this up? You've had your three minutes.
Just that, I talked to Mr. Salter, didn't know him from Adam, only from the looks that I, or the pictures that I'd seen on Facebook. Him and I had a couple of conversations to my worries about the response time. We got, someone came around to our house in the afternoon, and this happened at 6:00 AM. This was late in the afternoon when someone put an X on our front door. To me, that was unacceptable. I had offered Mr. Salter, or suggested to Mr. Salter, that there be a better response team. And that I would personally volunteer for that response team. We talked about a couple of things. I addressed the noise issue, that we are going to listen to chainsaws and wood chippers for a very, very long time. And soon, it's going to be everybody and his brother coming into that neighborhood, getting firewood from their buddies, and we're going to listen to chainsaws longer. I asked him about some kind of ordinance where the chainsaws and whatnot could be shut down at a certain time of night. Saying that, I didn't know Mr. Salter from Adam, had no clue of his character. Two days ago, Mr. Salter rode up on his bicycle, right after the fact that I had learned that Mr. Salter had assaulted a female.
You've had your.
I'm going to keep speaking, Mr. Salter.
You've had enough. You've had your time.
Okay. His words to me were, we live in a non-binary society and I'll do it again. And the look in his eyes, he literally wanted to punch me. I was ready for him to strike at me. And I was ready for it, believe me.
You've had your time. Sit down.
Good. I'm calling for your resignation as a citizen of this city. I'm calling for your resignation from all of whatever you do.
You've had your time. Sit down now, please. Let's carry on with the meeting. Next up is old business. On that, Scott?
He also said that he'd do it again. I'm leaving. But he also informed me that he'd do it again.
Don't know if Mr. Dunlap or Olson are here? Oh, I didn't swing around far. You're right. Yeah, so I'm just here to answer some of your guys' questions that you had about it.
Which one are you?
I'm Jacob. Sorry, I'm Jacob. I'm Jacob.
That was me that talked with you the other day.
Okay. Yeah, so hopefully I can answer some of your guys' questions and concerns that you had about the plan for the car show.
Counsel?
I don't think we had as many questions about a car show as we did about-
Motorcycle.
Well, that's, yeah, the whole thing, yeah. I just don't think any of us were real comfortable with somebody outside coming in and using one of our parks to put on a yellow motorcycle display. I, you know, I fear for liability for the city and everything else as far as something like that goes. I just don't, you know, without having more information, I, you know, I don't see how we can allow something like this to go through.
I don't think the motorcycle thing is gonna work, honestly. But if you want to do the car show, if you were to lay, I think if, a start would be if you were to lay out a map of the park, and say what, show us what area you wanted to use, where the cars would come in and go out. Again, are you gonna be selling tickets or taking money of any type?
Uh, yeah.
Would you need fences around something? Would you need police protection? We don't have enough to go on right now.
Right. So, as far as police protection, I don't think that would be necessary. We're not gonna need roads blocked off or anything like that. We're not doing a cruisin' type thing. We just want to do a stationary car show. Fencing, I wouldn't think we would need it. We could use, you know, caution tape or something to block off certain areas so cars don't drive through it. And I do have a map of like, certain areas that, if you would like to see that drawn up a little bit. As far as for the dirt bikes, I understand you guys' concern about those. We did have some safety measures in place for that. We have an EMT on standby, insurance policy. It's a $2 to $3 million insurance policy to cover property and to cover spectators. Along with, they have, they use a mat that they will set down on the grass, so it doesn't tear up the grass. If you're not comfortable with that, that's, you know, your call, this isn't my property. But we did have, you know, some measurements in line to keep everybody safe, along with keeping the property safe, because I understand that, you know, upkeep with the park is not, you know, easy.
So Jacob, I guess my question is, what would the freestyle dirt bike show entail?
So, they just do some tricks on their bikes. They'll hit a ramp, and they'll hit some tricks while they're in the air, and they will land on an airbag ramp. So it's a ramp for a down angle when you land on it, but it's also air. So if they were to, you know, wipe out or something, it would cushion the landing, preventing, you know, injuries. Which I have pictures of that as well, that I could submit to you guys at any time if you-
Yeah, from my perspective, I don't see that this was, I think what happened was, was a lack of information on our part-
Right.
-to make that decision. As far as the hows and the whys, and what you're planning on doing. So, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're able to explain this, at least from my perspective.
I don't know, I guess we're looking at more of a motorcycle show type thing than we are like a enduro race or something like that.
Yeah, so it'd be like, they're just doing tricks. They're not going to be racing, they're not gonna be just tearing up the grass around there. It's just one area of the park that they would drive up, hit the ramp, come down, and then just go back around and do it again.
How many are there?
Uh, there would be two or three. He hasn't quite gotten the third guy yet, but there's a possibility there would be three bikes there.
And how long?
And they'd be one at a time, I'm assuming?
Yes, one at a time.
How long does the show last?
Uh, it's gonna last about, roughly an hour. As far as the car show, that's gonna last about four hours. But the bikes, it's gonna last hour, maybe two hours.
What I would, I would just say, are you like 17, 18, something like that?
I'm actually 23.
You're 23, okay.
Yeah, I look young, that's all right. I look really young.
Okay.
It's a good thing like that.
I was gonna say, it's, something like this is awfully hard to grasp when you're young.
Yeah.
And if there's somebody else in your organization that has done these things, you could get some help on planning and laying out, answering the questions, asking the questions that need to be asked, and then answering, and come back to us with more information.
Right. This was kind of like, thrown on me last minute with Hunter. This was like, his idea. He eventually told my mom about it and my sister, but really didn't communicate too much to me. So, it was kind of thrown on me a little bit later, and I started coming up with my own ideas, and I discussed it today with him. I called him earlier, just to make sure if he had any ideas as far as safety to maybe ease your guys' mind and allow us to do it. And that's when he told me about the airbags that they use for the landing ramp, and the mats they use for the grass, and the insurance policy that they would have. So I just figured that would be good. I do have a map of the, what we would use as the layout, if you guys would like to see that.
There's a lot of pieces to what you're trying to do.
There, there is, yeah.
And not to put any pressure on council, but they want to stage this event on August 17th. And typically with these events, the old maritime, the arts and crafts, if council is okay with the concept and comfortable, and I think I brought up some concerns about the motocross and all of that, and I think he's answered them this evening, typically the council will approve, subject to coordinating with DPW and police. So some of those, you know, I guess the question was, the fundraiser, I don't know if it matters to us all that much. We just wanna, we would work with Jacob and his brother as far as mapping what areas they can use, and Chief covering, you know, any safety concerns. And Brian, I don't know if he, our public works director spoke with you or somebody, but he, Brian did say the other day that they use mats, and he doesn't think there would be any type of significant damage to the park, which was my concern. Of course, I read this letter, and I'm seeing cars driving over and bikes all over the place, and it's kinda like, uh-oh, what are we getting into? But I think his presentation tonight, Brian doing a little more research, my comfort level is much higher.
Well, there's one about noise. Is there gonna be a lot of noise with these bikes?
It'd be a decent amount, but it wouldn't be too loud. Dirt bikes are-
They're just like a regular dirt bike?
Yeah, they're just regular dirt bikes. It'd be allowed as maybe a chainsaw.
Harley to make more noise.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're fairly quiet as far as bikes are concerned, anyway. We would like to push back the time to like, September 14th, though, because we haven't been able to come to the meeting, so whether or not, if you were to approve it, we would like it to be pushed back, so we have more time.
What, and I'm looking at the letter, what time of day are you looking at? I guess we could, that's one of the details we could still work with.
Around, I would say noon to like, 6:00, and I want to do it for four hours and leave us time to like, do some cleanup. We're not just gonna leave, you know, the park the way it is.
How long, did you say how long the bikes would actually be performing?
Yeah, so about an hour to two hours.
Okay.
Probably a couple different times, would be my guess.
Yeah.
Do one in a part, and then maybe do a B part later. Okay.
I think my concerns are what everybody else's disconcerns for the park being chewed up. I mean, park staff work really hard to keep the parks up, and, and safety, safety of people, not, and, you know, people coming to watch, and, you know, just wondering where all of this is gonna happen. I, I think also just a little bit more about who actually you were with. I mean, I know we've gotten the letter, but like, who would be responsible people, and, you know, are there volunteers? And just, you know, just a little more information. But if you're gonna be working with the police and DPW, Scott, and, you know, to see if something like that would work.
So you want just tentative approval from us? Is that what you're looking for?
Um, well, maybe.
He's looking for it.
He's looking for it.
But I'm not sure about tentative. I think if you're comfortable at this point is to approve the use of funnel field for, as requested, subject to coordination with city staff.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second. It's on. All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those who say no? It's approved. There you go. Thank you, Judge. Okay, in touch. Thank you. All right, new business, Resolution 24, compensatory pay. Scott?
Yeah, of course, storms never come in a timely, in a timely manner. This is primarily asking council to compensate with pay versus hours. Still one-to-one, there's no time and a half pay or anything. For the non-hourly employees that put in significant time during the storm, I think Brian Armstrong probably leads the pack. Myself, Chief, I'm not sure if Alyssa had any overtime. And I think that's about it. Everybody else in the public works? Oh, Jake, down at DPW. And I think you're still hourly, right? Your salary? Okay. So it would cover maybe six employees. It's not a ton of money, but just some sort of compensation. I know in 1998, the city did cover the overtime for the non-hourly employees. So I think at most, somebody might be around $1,600, minus taxes, if I got insurance and everything else they're gonna take out of it.
I have compensatory pay at my, my job, and it, it helps a lot, and it actually helps all involved. I mean, because essentially, you're just giving a day off where it's earned elsewhere. Have you thought of a letter of understanding, maybe with the union as well, the DPW union, and see if that's something you may want to do with them as well, or not?
Uh, no, they get time and a half.
Okay, all right.
That's in the union contract, and there's, I mean, they're, they're gonna get paid for everything that they did.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if we, if we ended up deciding to do a letter of understanding with them, that they get compensatory pay, or compensatory time, I mean, it's just-
I don't, I don't think we can. But the Fair Labor Standard Act would exclude them from comp time.
Hmm. Okay.
Because like I said, I think there's six department heads and two non-department heads that do not qualify for time and a half pay.
Okay.
So we do allow comp time, but end of the fiscal year, we try and use it up before the end of the year, and some of us just kinda got caught.
I will make a resolu, or approve, or put resolution, motion to put Resolution 24 on the board.
Okay. It moved in second, is there any discussion?
I think I would feel better about it if I saw a list, it wouldn't take too long to put a list of the people and the amount of pay that they're gonna get if we prove it.
It's not, it's time off, it's not pay?
No, this is pay.
This is pay.
Oh, this is pay?
This is pay.
Oh, so it's not just, it's not time off, then?
Correct. I believe Brian is about 39 hours, I'm probably about 35, Chief is 10?
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half. I almost shorted him, hour and a half. I don't know if you or Alyssa-
Only a few hours.
Only a few hours. And then Jake, I think had two hours. And again, I think, you know, it's probably anywhere from 200 bucks up to 1,800. Nobody's gonna get rich.
Now, I'm gonna make the unpopular comment. I worked at Houmette for 41-plus years as a salaried employee. Eight of those years, I was an exempt salary employee, which means you work as much as is required to do the job. You don't get any extra pay for it, you don't get any extra days off for it. So, I am not in favor of the motion, or the resolution.
Is there any further discussion? Rule call, please. Yes.
So you can go.
Yeah.
Brown?
No.
Zimmer?
No.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Resolution 24, pass. Next up is public comment. Anyone like to make a comment?
Eric Harsh, 1511 Moody Street. Seen a couple of you guys around my neighborhood. As far as the cleanup is concerned, seeing three of you guys in here right now that were just in my neighborhood for two days, was, it was pretty cool. It was nice to see the involvement and the, and the city coming and doing the cleanup, it was great, so I want to thank you for that. We live in a cool, small town. It's, uh, it's pretty interesting. Mirrors was cleared by 25 neighborhood guys, just, guys and gals, just went down and started helping those guys clear it. So it was just pretty neat to see everybody come together. Ian, on the subject of Mayor Salter, I believe he does a great job for this city. What happened, I believe there are a lot, there's a lot more facts to it than what it is. It doesn't sound great, looking at it from the, from the public words, but I believe there's a lot to it that we're not taking into account. I believe he was not charged with, with a crime, and I'm in support of Steve Salter continuing to be on mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Hello, Heather O'Connell. I too would like to speak in regards to Steve Salter. On a personal level, yes, I would consider Steve a friend of mine. On a professional level, he has been involved in things that I do here. I, for many years, run Whitehall Apartments. Steve, before being mayor or anyone connected to the community, would show up and drop off quarters to my office and say, "If anybody didn't have anything, let them know that somebody volunteered quarters with no name." Noted. Sorry, I'm calling you out now. When buses ran through here, Steve would stop in and say, "Here are some bus passes if any of your residents need it and don't have it." Steve showed up in the middle of everything that was going on, and I live in Fruitland Township at the edge of the storm, and took damage as well. He calls, he checks in. I personally worked in a business right down the road from Steve and Leslie, right where all of this happened. I can tell you on several occasions, I have heard Amy, who you keep, I keep hearing people describe her as an elderly senior. And the version that I know is someone who shouts and yells vulgar things across the yard in the middle of the afternoon because she's drunk. The person that I know, that I witnessed, I was in the yard, I've heard her shout horrible things. And all I'm saying is, I understand what's been made aware. I would ask, how many times has she been arrested for verbally being inappropriate in her yard? I watched her get arrested when I worked at the business right down the road from her. I just don't think that we're, we're relaying all of the information of the character of the person that you're saying. I'm not saying that all of the story is there, but there's definitely more to the story. I have heard her be abusive to both Steve and Leslie. And, and all I know is that we're acting on something that is a, a police matter, and we should wait until that plays out to know what the facts are. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? We're adjourned.